Board of County Commissioners is now back in session. Next item on the agenda would be Ms. Amy Hammond Kelly, Board of Adjustment Report.
Okay. We didn't have a Board of Adjustment quorum again, and I did meet with, I mean, I did speak with the Board of Adjustment members, and all of them would like to remain on the board, with the exception of Gil Altry, he would like to become an alternate and find a more permanent position for his seat.
And that's in my district?
I believe so.
Yeah. I'll see if I can find somebody to give a point as a...
Okay.
However, we are having, we have, we're able to organize a special meeting for tomorrow. We're going to hear all the items that we missed earlier in the month.
Okay.
So, they will be in front of you until July 30.
Okay.
We'll be moving that item to July 30.
Okay. Next would be Planning and Zoning Report?
Yes, sir. This morning, we have a recommendation for approval. It was a unanimous vote. It's a consideration of a request to construct a single-family dock located at 639 Highway 98, East Point, Franklin County, Florida. The proposed uncovered terminal is eight foot wide by 20 foot long with a four-foot by 150-foot dock and two mooring pilings. Approval will be contingent upon DEP and core permits. Request submitted by Larry Joe Colson, A1 Quality Docks, agent for Jeffrey Honeycutt, and there is a house that's on north of Highway 98.
So moved.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Masti, second by Commissioner Lockley. Any further discussion?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. Not that it matters, but I want us to vote on something that is affected. Is that the correct address, 639? Because 639 East Point should be right past Sixth Street. And this is on past the school.
No, this one's before you get to the school. This is just past Zoe Segre's, and she's in the 600 range.
Okay. I just want to make sure it's right.
It's just down the road from it, right, just right there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any further comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries?
Okay. The second one we have is a recommendation for approval. It's unanimous. Consideration of a request to construct a single-family dock located at Lot 32, Unit 1, Holiday Beach, also known as 11 Mardi Gras Way, Alligator Point, Franklin County, Florida. The proposed uncovered terminal is eight foot by 20 foot with a four-foot by 24-foot dock. I believe that number is incorrect. I'll have to get the right dimensions. I believe it's 240 foot. Mr. Morosky, is that 240 foot?
That's not, that's not my dock.
Okay. I do apologize. This is for Widener. It is 24 foot with an eight-by-eight lower platform with a set of four-by-four, four-by-five steps. Customer has their DEP, and they are exempt from their core permitting. Request submitted by Larry Joe Colson, A1 Quality Docks, agent for James Widener, applicant, and they have a proposed house that meets the 1,000 square foot footprint.
Pleasure of the Board.
Mr. Chairman, let me ask some questions. Amy, I see by the drawing, if you look back down at the drawing for Mr. Widener, it looks like they're going along the landward side because I looked at the picture, and if you look at the picture of it, it looks like you gotta, you know, you gotta be careful with that because if it comes out very much, you'll be blocking navigational stuff.
Yes, ma'am.
So, you know, I'm glad to see that they've got it arranged to where it goes along instead of sticking out, you know?
Along the shoreline.
Uh-huh, along the shoreline instead of sticking out because if you'll notice that it looks like a boathouse or something across there that would interfere with that. If you built it out, you wouldn't be able to go in there then.
That's correct.
So, I'm glad. It's unanimous?
It was.
I'll make a motion to approve as long as it's landward like that.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Lockley. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries?
Okay. Okay. We have a recommended approval. It was unanimous. It's a consideration of a request to construct a single-family dock located at Lot 5, Alligator Point Subdivision, also known as 1559 Alligator Drive, Alligator Point, Franklin County, Florida. The proposed covered terminal platform will be eight foot by 20 foot with a four-by-250-foot dock and two uncovered boat lifts. Customer has DEP and core permits. Request submitted by David Keith, Docs for Less, agent for William and Diana Morosky. There was a 24-foot riparian right line. They have moved it to where they both, both sides meet the riparian right lines.
Okay.
So, they will center it up. So, that was the only concern that we had. And they do have a house. It's on the gold side of Alligator Drive.
And the 250-foot is not going to give any farther out than any of those docks that's already there, is it?
No, ma'am. I'm going to show you this aerial. 250 foot, there's some longer docks in there, so they should be fine.
Okay. Just long they don't go out no farther, I don't have no problem with it.
Pleasure of the Board.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Masti, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries.
Okay. We have a rezoning request. It was a recommended approval for a public hearing. It was unanimous. Consideration of a request for a rezoning from C2 Commercial Business District to C4 Mixed Use Residential Commercial, Unit 1, Block 2 West, Lot 20, also known as 115 West Pine Avenue, St. George Island, Franklin County, Florida. Request submitted by Pandora Schlitt, agent for Teresa and Mark Milliken. And this lot is, there's two lots in there. This blue box represents two lots, but they're on the eastern side of that. They only own half of that. And it's sandwiched in between, those two lots are sandwiched in between C4 zoning already. And they're just requesting that one to become C4 as well.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
I mean, they are aware that C4 now has a different meaning to what it did have, correct?
Yes. We did go over that with the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they are aware. It was made known at that meeting also that C4, if they wanted residential, the first floor would have to be a commercial business establishment, and the next floor could be residential.
Motion to approve the request?
Second. We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Lockley. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries.
Okay. Let's get this back. We have a sketch plat approval, recommended approval. It was unanimous. Consideration of a request for sketch plat approval of a parcel known as Track 10, Base 2, East End Beaches, St. George Island, Franklin County, Florida. Request submitted by Barbara Sanders in Duncan, PA, agent for multiple owners. They're really not changing the whole lot configuration. This is what they have existing, and they have common area that's planted in this area and in this area. And Lot 1 and Lot 5 would like to have contiguous lots, so they're proposing to change the common area configuration, the same acreage swapped. So, here's, this remains the same, and this common area, this acreage will be swapped for acreage above the existing common area. And all of the lot owners are in agreeance.
And Amy, this would basically just be a plat change, correct?
It would be a plat change, yes.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Lockley. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries.
We have a recommendation for approval. It was a unanimous vote. Consideration of a request for a sketch plat approval for a one-unit subdivision. It was called Five Branches, but they've changed the name to Leisure Landings. It's a two-acre parcel, also known as Lots 19 and 20, Schooner's Landing, St. George Island, Franklin County, Florida. Request submitted by Barbara Sanders, Sanders in Duncan, PA, agent for Five Branches LLC. And this morning, she passed out, the configurations have not changed. It's just they've split out the two lots from the original, the original plat. This location map shows you this is one lot...
Hang on a minute. Hang on a minute. We got a phone ringing out there. Please put your phones on vibrate.
It's on the bench. There's nobody else. Take it outside.
Proceed, Ms. Kelly.
Okay. If you'll notice the location map, this is in blue. That's one of the lots, and this is the second lot that's in question. They're wanting to go to a one-unit subdivision, and that would allow them to have one house on two acres instead of two houses.
Pleasure of the Board.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a question. Amy, how's, how are you in hand is different than what we're looking at here?
There's really no difference. This is actually a plat that would be recorded in the clerk's office.
This is, okay. And this is similar to what we've done several months back to let them consolidate their lot, and they understand that once they do it, they're probably going to be splitting it, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Lockley. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries.
Okay. We have one more. It's a commercial site plan review. It was recommended approval unanimously. It's a consideration of a request for a commercial site plan review to construct a 5,000-square-foot building located at the corner of Highway 98 and South Bay Shore Drive, East Point, Franklin County, Florida. Request submitted by Mark Lewellen, agent for Billy Schultz, applicant. This is basically part of the old KOA site.
Over in East Point?
Yes, ma'am. It covers from all of this area here, and here's the old KOA site right here. And...
And it's to construct a 5,000-square-foot building?
Yes, ma'am.
For a commercial building?
Yes, ma'am.
Did they say what kind of a commercial it would be?
It's five units in one building, so it's more like...
Like cellar.
Like cellar tile. And I have the schematics on...
I was hoping it was a grocery store or something. That's what I was hoping, be a grocery store.
And they do have several more lots out there that could be developed.
Uh-huh. You got it, Michael.
Oh, here we go.
And that's the location map, and here is the... I apologize, this, it resized. This is the property as it lays right now. There's the old KOA building and the old enclosed pool that's been covered up, and then you go to, I said that twice, and this is the site plan. They are required to have 20, 25 parking spaces, and they have 27, and that includes, it includes two handicap. They're not proposing to have large tractor-trailer bodies, so there's no unloading and loading dock facility. It's just normal commercial trucks. They do have an entrance off of Highway 98 and off of South Bay Shore Drive. There was a question concerning the 40-foot-wide easement in the south portion of the property, but they did, they revised the site plan. They moved the stormwater out of that 40-foot-wide easement, so there's nothing encroaching into that easement.
So, that's different than what we have in our packet, because I was still showing the lines through it.
Yes. This is new. This is the one that would be approved.
Okay.
And I'll make sure that the clerk has that as well.
And is there, is there any issues there, Andy, with wetlands?
There doesn't appear to be any. It's in a X zone. They get build-on grade. There's no, there's more traditional wetlands that goes farther east towards the Dollar General area.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Masti. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries.
Okay. That concludes planning and zoning.
Thank you, Ms. Amy.
Thank you. I'll have a good day.
Next will be Mr. Kirk Blair of TDC report.
Today, first of all, the collections and our visitor center and website activity, while we go up and down every month, there's seems to be a little predictability. We're ecstatic that we're up 2% this year on collections, better than being down. And all of our other indicators are, you know, doing real well. We're getting a lot of, a lot of web hits this year on our website after we've implemented the new website, and our visitor center activity is up as well. The major thing I have on my report today is you will remember that you asked us to, the board, my board, to review the, our sustaining grant program, and we've been doing that, engaged in that almost close to a year now, in looking at the existing programs and looking at what's necessary. In what we've done, I've provided you an outline of what recommendations we have with that. First of all, we went beyond just the, excuse me, just the sustaining grant program and looked at all of our grant activity to try to adjust our grants to, you know, make them more responsive and get more of a participation by the nonprofit. So, in general, what we've done is we did, we're recommending doing away with the sustaining grant program. That's a program that we started 10, 11 years ago. It was a valuable program at the beginning. In those days, we didn't have as much of a year-round visitation as we do now, and a lot of those organizations began to get very dependent on the sustaining grant program, and so it's been continued from year to year. Our board decided to recommend that we do away with the sustaining grant program and supplement it with a couple of other programs. All of the programs that we are proposing, we have four of them this year, all require match. They all require a maintenance of effort by the nonprofit organizations that are running, that are applying for the grants, which is a little different than what we've done in the past. We have increased the number of grant programs from 37 to 49, the number of, not programs, but the number of opportunities to get grants from 37 to 49, which means more, more groups are eligible for funding. We did very little with the, our small nonprofit promotions grants. We still have 30 grants. They're still in the amount of $2,000 for an event. They're envisioned to be single-day events. We've added a major event category which provides $5,000 for events that extend for multiple days and that can document that they serve to attract out-of-town visitors so that we can fill beds. Excuse me. We've created a museum grant program that, and this was one our board had a lot of struggle with, but it recognizes that museums are an important venue that we need to support that do not always have the ability to become self-sustaining. Museums are an important part of conveying the history of the community, and yet there are, you know, limitations on the funds that they can have available. So, this program, we've provided as a means of, you know, providing some security to the museum programs in the county, and at the same time, we've established some criteria that require an effort on the part of the museum organizations that reduces their sense of entitlement and that they acquired, you know, in our sustaining grant program, and it requires match for them as well. And then finally, we've added a new grant program that is called our Market Development Partners, and this encourages funds, makes funds available for nonprofits to participate in TDC marketing activities. There are some, excuse me, very important services that a number of the nonprofits provide, and one of them in particular is that our whole marketing program is designed around collecting email addresses, quality email addresses, that we, that allow us to market to people nationwide on a monthly basis. We started that several years ago. We're now up to and above 50,000 qualified email leads that we market to every month, and this is a very important part of our program, and we're looking to continue working with nonprofits. We collect those emails in a number of ways, but we want to continue working with nonprofits to have them help us do it. We get the email addresses by doing campaigns like our getaway programs, and we collect emailed addresses from our visitor centers. So, this is a way to include some of the more active nonprofits in our marketing program. And as I mentioned earlier, each of the programs require a match, and so our board is moving ahead in this direction. We wanted to, they wanted me to come in and discuss it with you, see if this was moving in the direction that you wanted it to relative to sustaining grants and the ability to fund more organizations, a lot more people be part of our grant program. So, if it meets with your satisfaction, we'll continue moving ahead with it and starting to put out proposals for nonprofits to apply and sift through those applications so that we can get the programs finalized by the end of September.
Pleasure of the Board. It's like he was asking for your concurrence on the above-listed grant programs that have been changed.
Some of them you didn't get up. You told us you gained them, but you ain't get no numbers.
Yes, sir. I'll do that. We have the small grant program, which is the 30 grants. That's $2,000. Excuse me. The major events, the multiple-day events would be capped at 5,000. Excuse me. The museum grants, they have to, the way they apply is that they apply for 50% of their previous year's budget, and that we would cap at 15,000, and then the Market Development Partners are capped at 12,000.
I'm going to ask a question, please, Mr. Chairman. In this, what we have in our packet, just a point of clarification, museum grants, in one spot it says capped at 20, another spot says 15.
Because of the scheduling of your meeting and our meeting, the material that you got in your packet was prepared prior to our meeting. Our board changed it last week to go from 20 to 15.
With one more people being helped.
Right.
Yeah. That's, and commissioners, that's what we tried to do, and I was very mindful to remind them that that was the direction that this board wanted to go in to make sure that more people were able to access the sustaining grants and the other programs that we have with the TDC. So, the TDC board moved ahead, and they thought you all would want them to do.
Any other comments from the board members? Pretty much, I assume everybody here is in concurrence with the new programs that they outlined here?
I'm good with it.
Okay, Ms. Blair. Go forward.
Okay. We'll start by advertising the availability of grants. I think, just a comment, I think where you're going to see the ability to do addition, even more than the 49 grants that we've identified, is because particularly, we require a match, but in several of the programs, we require them that they can only apply for 50% of their previous year's budget. And so, some of them won't qualify for, say, the $15,000 museum grants. They'll only qualify for 8,000 or 10,000. It all depends on how active and how effective their programs have been and whether they've been able to bring, you know, additional funds to the table. So, that'll give us some room. We'll have the ability to give out the rest of the funds in additional grants and allow more people to participate, so. I'll take your thoughts back to the board, and we'll move ahead. We did last week support a couple of museum programs because the state cut their funding on museum grants this year during the legislative session, and so we provided some funds for a couple of the museum programs in the county. And then, we don't have, I just wanted to announce, we generally have a TDC board meeting in July. However, as you may remember, we've scheduled a special meeting on July 18th to review the responses to the RFQs that you should be getting by the end of the month, and our board will review them. We've got a couple of weeks that they can spend on reviewing those in order to get the recommendations for the vendors back to you at your first meeting in August. Our marketing committee will be meeting on June 27th at 2:00 p.m., and our next board meeting will be August 8th at 2:00 p.m. If you don't have any other questions, that's...
Mr. Blair, have you received quite a few responses to the proposals for the administrator of TDC?
Commissioner, I'm not getting those proposals. They're coming to Michael. The last time I checked, he hadn't.
Commissioner, I have my...
Okay. I was just, I was just wondering.
Yeah, me too. I was trying to ask, you know, I double-checked with the clerk's office just to make sure somebody didn't send it there by mistake, but...
When is the deadline for them to submit that?
29.
29.
29, from this month?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, I will tell you that I've had several people contact me that indicated that they had an interest in applying for it, but we haven't, haven't seen anything result from that yet.
I forwarded some to you also, some of those contacts. They called me, and I found them.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Blair from the board members?
Yeah, I got one. Mr. Blair, I had asked Michael this morning to get with you. We got a new basketball court out at D.W. Wilson. They didn't have money to put up the lights, so I want, if y'all got any, I don't know if could you do it or...
Well, I think we've got, we've demonstrated that we can do it. We've got some money that is not totally committed yet this year. I guess it depends on how much you need for that. We have some money in this year's budget that we could do something along those lines if, I mean, as I say, I don't know how much you're going to need, but we'll work on it. Sure.
Any other comments from Mr. Blair? Thank you for coming in this morning.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda would be, Madam Clerk?
I don't have a written report, Mr. Chairman, but I had, my finance office asked me this morning if I could get y'all to approve having budget workshops on Thursday and Friday, July 19th and 20th. We have to work around the county court schedule for this room, and that was some dates that they felt like would work for them.
19th and 20th?
July.
Of July.
I don't have no problem.
That'll be fine with me.
Okay. We'll set up your budget workshops for those two days and send notices out to everyone. Thank you.
Next on the agenda would be Mr. Alan Pierce, Restore Coordinator.
We did item number four on my report, so we'll start back at the top now. Item number one. This is an update on the Alligator Point meeting I attended last Saturday. As the board is aware, I participated in an apta-sponsored community meeting on Saturday, June 9th, to discuss the, with Alligator Point residents, the current and future status of Alligator Drive. The meeting was run by a professional moderator, and at the end, a vote was taken. I'm not repeating my remarks here, as I have provided a copy for the board packet, and I discussed some of my remarks with the board at the June 5th county commission meeting. The option to be voted on were created by apta, and the tabulation vote was done by apta. The vote was non-binding. There was probably 150 people in attendance, although it may have been slightly fewer since, you know, I'm not really sure. I didn't count the people. So, the straw ballots were as follows. Option 1, and this is coming straight off the ballot... Option one, and this is coming straight off the ballot. I'm in favor of toll road to fund road protection. There were four votes. I'm in favor of MSBU tax to promote, to fund road protection, eight votes. I'm in favor of a combination toll road and MSBU to fund road protection, 38 votes. And option four, I don't want to pay anything for road protection. Leave the Franklin County government to decide what to do, but no toll road, MSBU, or tax increase, 38 votes. There were another 20 ballots that did not vote, but were turned in wanting more information. And on option four, there were a number of people who did vote, but also wanted more information. So that's the summary of what happened there. You know, you all can read into it, which, same as I do, that looks like there was not a consensus of opinion about what really needs to be done. So I'm going to go on with my comments then. This is my recommendation to the board. We use the FEMA funds that are currently working through the FEMA review process to repair the road. I was provided a revised cost estimate for the project last week, and I refused to sign it because there was a glaring error, in my opinion. A new FEMA-generated cost estimate, and this is one that we didn't ask for. This is now, we're reviewing this project for two years, and now we're getting another review, but another FEMA engineer had reduced the length of sheet pile that protected the road from 1,000 feet, which is full length it needs to be, down to 225 feet. There is no logic in only installing part of the sheet pile. After further review by FEMA, they agreed it was a mistake. So I'm waiting for a revised cost estimate that includes all the necessary parts to rebuild the road. FEMA did take out the concrete cap on the north side of the road that the engineers recommended. At this point, the concrete cap on the north side is something we can live without. And I'll say parenthetically that Commissioner Sanders reminded me of this. You're going to get a sidewalk on the north side anyway with a DOT project because we're building a spike path down there. So it's going to, it'll come, but just in a different funding mechanism. And it's within the next three years, so it'll be about the same time we get this thing going. So rather than start another fight with FEMA over a concrete cap that would stall the approval funds, I will recommend Pam Burnell sign the revised PW so we can move forward with the project. Let me just say parenth, well, I'll finish this, then I'm going to say something else. I also recommend the board, that the board wait for consensus among the Alligator Point residents before proceeding with any road protection projects. What follows is the current plan for the road. It will be moved as far south as FDEP will permit and then rebuilt as follows. A two-lane paved road, a concrete cap on the south side, vertical sheet pile on the south side, and rock barriers outside of the sheet pile. No protective measures will be taken on any part of the road. So at this time, once the FEMA project is finished, that will be the end of the construction. But let me say, I just was so frustrated and I probably, and I lost my cool and did something which I normally do. Last week, in the process of talking to FEMA, I had gone, when I'd gone to the Alligator Point meeting, I had told the residents of Alligator Point that, you know, this FEMA's review is being held up and that I encouraged them to call whoever they want to call at the state or federal level to find out on their own terms why nothing is being done. So some of the residents, I presume residents, and I'm not, it's fine that they called. They called the governor's office, and the governor's office became alarmed and nothing was done. So the governor's office called the State Department of Emergency Management. They in turn called Pam. And the question posed to Pam was, from the governor's office, why hasn't Franklin County done something about the road? I was furious. The governor had been there. The governor had promised that he would do something about the road.
Promise me.
Promise you. And then, so we get nothing out of the governor's office. And in turn, a question, why haven't we done something about the road? The road's being held up through a FEMA review now in our second year. I just, I lost it. So I did something which maybe I should have done before. I called Will Kendrick. Will Kendrick works for Representative Congressional Neil Dunn. And I asked him to look into the situation because it's apparent that we're going through a review after review that doesn't appear to any end of it. We're in an endless loop. So I talked to Commissioner Sanders, I called her brother, and said, look, I'm, this is hopeless. I don't know when this review is going to be in. I don't know what the outcome's going to be anymore.
And he said it's a mess. He said it's a mess, it got it all messed up. And y'all, we're so fortunate to have Allen over this because when FEMA brought this down here, it wasn't 1,000 feet. It was 225 feet. If he had not recognized that and caught that and signed it on, we would have just been paid out. What, about a million?
Right. We lost a million dollars of funding just by, by somebody's mistake.
So, I mean, thank God that he's here to see that. But before too long, myself nor him are going to be here. So, I mean, you need to, I mean, I'm getting everybody ready. Because they need to be very vigilant with this because FEMA will try to cram anything they can down your throat just to get us off their back.
That's correct.
And it's a very, it's a very time-consuming, serious problem. And then we catch, catch it from the residents. So about the dust. And I, my comment to that is, I've lived on dirt roads for 63 years and I hadn't had nothing happen to me. I put water sprinklers down on my dirt road, which is a county dirt road. So, I mean, we can't do nothing until FEMA moves ahead. And I've been trying to explain to people that we can't move ahead until FEMA moves ahead, but they don't understand that. And then the audacity of the governor to call DEM and get them to jump on Franklin County, that's wrong.
Right, it's wrong. Asking why we haven't done something.
Because if you remember in 2016, when Hermine did come through here that caused all that damage, we still had not been reimbursed for Tropical Storm Debbie in 2020.
That's correct.
And it wasn't until I made them acknowledge that, and then they reimbursed it. So, you know, there's a lot of stuff going on here and it's just not about a dirt road.
And unfortunately, millions of dollars are at stake. And it's just, anyway. Okay, well, that's, I don't have anything else to say. Unfortunately, that's where we stand. I did talk to Terry Madigan yesterday on the telephone. He's the president of apta. And, you know, they're going to continue to look at options, you know, and I'll be glad, I told him I'd be glad to respond to things. But, you know, I'm getting ready to leave, go off on another trip here, and other things are happening. So it's just really, that was our best shot as far as I could go on Saturday. And we'll see what happens next. Item number two, Triumph Meeting Update. As the board is aware, I attended the Triumph Meeting in Pensacola on June 12th. On the agenda was an item titled Discussion of Pending Oyster Industry Projects. Franklin County was not invited to participate in the discussion, so I went to listen. In a discussion led by Alan Benz, he recommended the Triumph Board create a sanctioned subcommittee to research the oyster industry and report back to the full Triumph Board on how best to blend all oyster issues into one cohesive proposal. Mr. Benz said the oyster industry stretched all across the Panhandle and that staff had heard about other projects that might be submitted. At this time, there are four projects in the Triumph Portal. And one is FSU Franklin County Project for an oyster hatchery and research component of 1.9 million. Then Panacea Co-op has two projects proposed, and they, and I just read the titles to you there. Oyster processing for 2 million, then a value-added oyster processing for 1.7. I looked briefly at what they're proposing. They want money of the Panhandle, Panacea Co-op to buy land on either side of their current production. So they're trying to expand by buying land and buildings is what they're up to. And then Department of Ag has asked for $750,000 to buy gear for aquaculture participants. And what they want is $250,000 a year for three years, and that each participant would be able to get $10,000 to help buy aquaculture gear. So that's what's in the pipeline now. The Panacea Co-op is essentially aquaculture also. So as you can see, the state of Florida, what's being submitted are things that are really promoting aquaculture. In a motion by Mr. Benz and approved by the Triumph Board, an official oyster subcommittee was established with Mr. Jason Scho and Mr. Stephen Riggs, both Triumph members serving on the subcommittee. An official subcommittee has to adhere to all sunshine rules related to public notices, so these meetings will be advertised. I spoke to Mr. Riggs after the meeting and offered that Franklin County would host the meetings. And he said that he would rely upon Mr. Scho to set up the meeting schedule. Depending on how many meetings it takes for Mr. Scho and Mr. Riggs to develop a recommendation, it could be months before the oyster industry moves forward. In the discussion led by Mr. Benz, he made it clear that he wants the research side and the production side up to be all one project. He also talked about the value of aquaculture and helping bring the industry back. I called Mrs. Susan Skelton yesterday, which is Monday, to inquire when an oyster subcommittee might meet. And she said they are working on a schedule now. I confirmed that. It's possible the meeting will happen over the Aner Building. I didn't tell any of that, but it's possible. And they are selecting, they, the staff are selecting the speakers. So this is a meeting they're running, and they're going to decide who's going to present information to them, and they're going to come a conclusion on their own terms. So that's sort of what's happening with the oyster industry. Another review and discussion by Triumph Board was their consideration of whether they need to hire their own marketing consultant to reach out to national, international business community for bigger ideas for Northwest Florida than is currently submitted. Mind you, Triumph has already received some 150 pre-applications seeking some $1 billion of funding when only $300 million are currently available. I do not think Franklin County projects are at risk because we are not that large and because we have not exceeded the $15 million of funding the legislature's Alligator Boards. But if I were wanting $20 million and all of a sudden Triumph says, oh, we need some better ideas, I'd be worried about funding possibility. That's not our problem. So if there's any questions about Triumph, that's what's going on there. Hopefully, this Triumph, this subcommittee, oyster subcommittee will happen in the next two weeks. It'll be public notice. I'll inform you all. I'm sure we'll be, well, we won't necessarily be invited to speak, but I'm sure we'll be, you know, encouraged to attend the meeting. And let's see where it's going. The Triumph Board has very strong ideas. I'll give you this sort of conclusion of Triumph. Very strong ideas about how the money's going to be spent. And they are operating in very tight sort of system where if it's on the agenda, the Triumph Board agenda, that means they've already decided they're going to do something for you. If it's not on the agenda, they don't talk about it. And you can just sit there all day long and it's not going to be talked about. You can go up to the podium and ask to be talked about, and they'll say, thank you very much. So it's a very tight ship.
They're not going to listen. Well, and I mean, you have to have a decorum sort of like that to be able to get the business done. And I guess that's what the topic.
You can call it decorum, you can call it iron curtain. I don't know if there's a decorum. It's operating one way.
I'm trying to be nice about it, Allen.
Well, I, some of us went to the meeting and I, you know. Okay, the last item is number three. Inform the board that I failed to get into the proper board meeting and an amendment between the FDEP and Franklin County for a time extension on the Islandview project. For reasons I no longer remember, there was a four-month time extension from January 1st, 2018, to April 30th, 2018, was granted on planning on the vegetation on the north side of the property. This executive was never entered in the board file, so I'll get it to Lori so we now know that it's in there. I can't remember now why we even had to do it, but we did.
Well, I can, I can tell you probably what it is. It's probably the rain has held them back because we've had rain over there just about every day.
It might have been.
So that's probably what it is.
And that's my report unless there's something else.
Any comments from the board member from Mr. Allen? Thank you, Allen. Next on the agenda will be Mr. Michael Marone, County Coordinator, report.
Commissioner, it's probably the shortest report I've had in a very, very long time. Item number one, Mr. Chris Rito is here from ARPC. He's the executive director. And he wants to talk to you about some of the activities that you're conducting.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Hey, Chris.
I'm just here, as Michael said, to give you a quick update on what your council's been working on over the past year. Last time I was here, I gave you a quick update. And I touched base with Michael to see if I could come around again and use a little bit of your time to talk about some of the things that we've been working on. But first, I do want to recognize Commissioner Jones. I just wanted to say he does represent you all very well. He's been actively engaged in our board meetings, comes every other month. Calls me about once a month to get another update or ask any questions. And I've really enjoyed having him on the board, and he's definitely a real asset. The council's been working recently on two resiliency projects that involve Franklin County. One, both of our, both, both projects involve Department of Environmental Protection, DEP. One involves peril of flood legislation that was passed back in 2015 by the governor. And it's really, peril of flood is another term that they came up with for sea level rise and flooding from hurricane surge.
I'm sorry, what was the term you used?
Peril of flood. So if you recall back in 2015, this is legislation that Governor Scott signed that required coastal counties to update their coastal management element. And over the years, they've realized that you're not actually, there's no way that they can force the counties to do this. So what we're going to do, and what we've been asked to do, is we've got a grant from DEP to basically provide some analysis using the latest tools. So we're working with Franklin County, Gulf County, and City of Carabel. And this doesn't get into the political aspects of sea level rise. It's, let's look at some of the technologies that are out there to kind of understand what some of the projections are for future flooding and sea level rise. And then, once you have that information, we are going to come up with some template language that you can consider, but you're under no obligation to adopt. And really, what the idea is, sea level is rising. It's, we want to make sure that elected officials have the best information available as they're investing and growing down the road so that they're not putting infrastructure in harm's way. That's one of the projects. Another project we've been asked, got, received a grant from DEP to look at a coastal resiliency and restoration analysis for the Apalachicola Bay and shoreline. So what we're going to be doing is working with another consultant. We're going out to RFP. And we're going to look at all those projects that are in that DEP portal that talk about enhancing resiliency to Apalachicola Bay. We're going to prioritize those projects. There's going to be a bunch of workshops. And then that will hopefully get things kick-started on some of this money, on all these ideas that have been sitting in that DEP portal for these years now to actually start spending some of that money on some of those projects. We have submitted a grant proposal to the Department of Economic Opportunity called Appalachian Online. And what we've been trying to do as your council, where we try to figure out ways that we can help our member local governments because the counties own the Appalachian Regional Plan Council. It's your entity. So we've tried to carve out a niche on ways that we can help our member local governments. And one of those areas that we've identified with the help of our board is geographic information systems, GIS. We realize that most of our smaller counties don't have a GIS, a dedicated person. If they do, that person might be there for a little bit, and then that person's gone once they get a little bit of a better job, higher paying job. What we'd like to do is house a GIS person full-time at the council and then provide that service to our, to our region. So we've submitted this application. We're keeping our fingers crossed because we applied for it last year and we came really close. We think this year might actually be the year. We're moving forward with it either way, one way or another. And what we'll do is basically digitize all the future land use maps that our local governments have that it needs to be done. And then we're going to put that online so citizens can access that. Local governments can access this, other state agencies. And as changes are made, we would like to work with those local governments to keep those maps current. So, and then, and we're also trying to expand that. We've got a GIS person right now who's part-time. If we land the grant, we're going to make her full-time, and she's been great. She's, we spent a lot of time investing in her. And we're hoping that that investment pays off by getting this grant, and then we can start providing that service year-round for our member local governments. Another thing we did, we, for the past, we landed it last year, but the previous three or four years prior to that, we had applied to the US EPA for a Brownfields Assessment Grant. And we finally got it last year. It was a $300,000 grant that will allow us to work with our towns and our counties around the region to identify sites that are prime for economic redevelopment. And these are your old gas stations, your old mechanic shops that have sat dormant, expect a lot of them in a downtown area where they're stagnant properties. They're kind of an eyesore. And if there's a perception that maybe that, that piece of land has contamination. It might have contamination, it might not. But whatever that perception is, has caused a negative stigma and nothing's happened with that property. So we're working with a consultant to basically go around the region, identify those properties, and use that consultant to perform an assessment. Now, the money can't be used to remediate the property. That's kind of the next phase down the road. But a lot of times, you'll find out that there's very little contamination or none at all. And then that helps get that property back on the tax rolls and flipped over and turned into a business again. So that's, that's a, for us, we feel it's a really good value that the council's providing to the regions. $300,000 in assessments is going to be pumped into the counties around, around our region. We're also working with the Economic Development Administration, EDA. And the planning councils in the state are recognized by the feds as economic development districts. So they try to funnel EDA monies through our regions on particular projects. And after Hurricane Irma, there was a huge notice of funding availability for disaster supplemental funds in the millions. So we're working with our Florida EDA rep. Florida, when we reached 20 million, actually was assigned, one person actually worked just with the state. Normally, we'd had, we have to deal with Atlanta. Florida has its own person now. So we're working with Greg Vada, our EDA rep, to identify potential disaster supplemental projects in the region. And we might have one involved in Franklin County, but it's in the early stages. We're also working, lastly, with USDA to expand our revolving loan fund. Most of the board members know that we have, and one of our most popular programs is a small business revolving loan fund. And these are for businesses that are just under the threshold. They get turned down by a commercial lending institution, and they've got a great business idea or they want to expand their business, but they've had, they've had a hiccup in their past that prevents them from getting a loan from a traditional lender. We have about a half-million dollar portfolio of small businesses around the region that without our loan program, they'd be out of business. And we've got a lot of success stories. We haven't been, we haven't done a really good job of marketing it, but that's really because we're always at capacity. We are hoping to expand that revolving loan fund and then get out there and start telling everyone and working with our local banks that, hey, we have this money, it's available, and this will help grow small businesses within, within the region. That's all I have. I definitely appreciate the time. If you all have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Any comments from the board member?
I just thank you, Chris, for coming today.
Yeah, and I just got one comment. On the revolving loan program, and not. On the revolving loan program in 1985, if it had not been for that, we would have had a lot of Osterman displaced worse than what they were in the 1985 storm. And I can tell you, the years that I served down there, they reminded me every, every quarter that I went to the ARPC meetings, they reminded that Franklin County still had that revolving loan outstanding. But me and Mr. Ed, the attorney back then, would go back and forth with our attorney sometimes to the side. You remember that, Michael? That's been a long time ago, but it does help small businesses. And they don't even know it's there half the time, Chris.
And it's, it's such a good tool that we've, we're really dedicating some effort to expand it, because we know there's need out there.
Yeah, it is.
We do appreciate you coming in today.
Thank you for having me.
Thanks, Chris. All right, Commissioner, moving on. Uh, item number two. Mr. Mark Herten received notification from FDEP that, of an application for lime rock mining north of Carabel. FDEP is accepting comments to concur with the project or object to the project until Friday, June 22nd. A copy of the application is attached to my report. As this project is similar to the Langston and Associates project that the board objected to earlier this year and is in the surrounding area, will the board object to this project in the same manner? Do you want me to write a letter in the same, uh, manner we did for the Langston project, objecting to this, to this project?
I would, I, being the commissioner of that district, I would, because we've already made, took the vote down. This, what this is now, uh, the, the names are different on the application. If y'all will look, you've got a Travis Griffiths that has made application. That's the owner of the property. See, Mr. Langston was just the, the man that was going around trying to get this program done. So, I would make a motion that we keep consistent what we did the very first time. Uh, I, I, to my knowledge, the Division of Forestry has not given them any permission to be able to use the roads, so therefore, they do, do not have access to their property.
Yeah, Mr. Perez talked to Mr. Mark.
Brown.
Brown? How about it?
Mark, Mark, yeah, no, not Mark.
John Brown.
John Brown, sorry. About it, he, he was, he's aware of it also.
Yes, I'll make a motion.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders. Do we have a second? We have, we have a second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Our motion carries.
Item three. Staff has received the contract from, uh, FWC for the removal of two derelict vessels. Originally, there were three vessels that were scheduled to be removed. By July 1st meeting, the board was informed that due to some legal issues, FWC was unable to remove the vessel in the Carabel River. The vessels located in Apalachicola River and the other located in Tucker Creek will be removed. Let me stop there and add something. So, yesterday, Mark, I'm skipping to, to, can, number four, kind of. So, you're going to see the next item that we got more money. That vessel that they had legal issues with, the website is showing that it's gone, it's been moved. We're not sure yet. As soon as I get an answer with that, I'll send you back. Yes, it's a little confusing. Mark has sent an email yesterday, late yesterday afternoon to FWC, what's going on? You said you couldn't do it, you said it was legal, now it's not on your website anymore. So, w- w- we're checking on it. I don't want to confuse the issue, but I just want to let you know that the contract that's in front of the chairman to sign right now is for the two vessels, the one in Apalachicola River and the other in Tucker Creek. Attorney Schuler has reviewed the contract. I need board action to authorize the chairman's signature on this contract.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sanders. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Our motion carries.
Now, item four. The security has received notice that a new application cycle for removing derelict vessels will start on June 25th, and it goes right up until August 8th. There are two vessels in the East Point Channel, which I left off there, that have been marked by FWC and are eligible for removal with this funding. Board action to authorize staff to apply for the grant and then include those two vessels for removal.
Same move.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Masti, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any further discussion? Mike, will we be able to add additional vessels if some were identified in this cycle?
If they're identified. I, that's how we came across that, that third vehicle, um, that third vessel was missing, because Mark started checking for additional, Mark, um, Mark, uh, vessel, uh, vessels, and there were no more. And he was, well, wait a minute, what happened to that one? So, but to answer your question, yes, sir.
More vessels could be added if more were identified.
Identified, FWC, yes, sir.
We do have a motion, a second on the floor. Uh, Commissioner Jones, do you have a comment?
I was just going to say that the, one of the two, from talking with Mark about it yesterday, one of these two vessels is almost directly off the boat ramps by the pavilion in East Point. And that there have been several people had, have actually run up on that boat. So, uh, I just want to make sure that the public was aware that's one of the ones talking about here that's going to be removed.
We do have a motion, a second on the floor. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Our motion carries.
We did five already, we did six, so seven. Inform the board that the City of Carabel has accepted the county's proposal that would allow the county's billing officials to inspect billing projects within the City of Carabel. Attorney Schuler and Attorney Hartman are finalizing the inter-local agreement. And finally, inform the board that the magic door, the new army, will be installed between the 25th and the 29th. There are no events scheduled for that week. And I know you noticed, you know, it's quite obvious, there's no Weems information on my report, what makes it pretty short. Mr. Cannington will be here at your, your new CEO, will be here at your next meeting to give you an update of, uh, what he's been up to, and what's, how many meetings he's been going and what's going on at Weems. And there's one more thing I'm thinking about, I'm still not sure, but I'll ask anyway. So, I was invited, uh, recently to the last, uh, Apalachicola Chamber, uh, meeting. And, um, interestingly enough, at that meeting, there was a presentation made about a project that Planning and Zoning had turned down at one point. It's very interesting, the presentation that was made there. Where I'm heading is, I think, it would probably, even though I don't need, need any more meetings in my life, it would probably be, be a good idea if I joined both chambers on behalf of the board representing the county and attend those meetings. Again, I'm going back and forth about it. I'm not sure if, if there's some, a reason why I shouldn't do it, please tell me.
I, I don't make, now, I'm going to give you my opinion. You've got enough on your plate.
True.
And, and it's not, I mean, if the, if the chambers of commerce had something that they need to bring, they, they know they can bring it here, but you've got enough on your plate.
Okay.
Because, I mean, we, our meetings are advertised.
Yeah.
First and third, and, you know, Tuesday of the month.
I, it, it was very interesting that, that, that presentation about that project was made in the manner in which it was made, but anyway, okay.
Let me tell you something, bud. I've been here in public office for 20 years. Just like this morning, somebody gets on Facebook, "I heard the county knocked down a dial on McDonald's restaurant and stopped them from coming into, uh, East Point."
We did?
We didn't do that, but you see, that, you're going to hear all kinds of stuff like that. You've got enough to take care of without putting yourself in the chambers of commerce. Now, if you want to do it on your, you know.
Oh, no, thank you.
You know, to me, I mean, that's my opinion.
Yeah, I'm fine.
That's my opinion.
I kind of threw that out there to get, to get a little feedback, you know.
I'm just trying to keep some, some burden off your back.
Yeah.
Anything I want to say is, you know, sort of admire, is that, you know, you, you work for the board, you do a great job working for the board. That there's, you don't want to be caught in a situation where you're asked, board, you know, a policy.
Or to speak for the board, yeah.
You're stuck in the public setting, so if I were you, I'd, oh.
You'd be in there hacking.
Stay in the back as much as possible.
Yeah, okay, all right. And that's the end of my report, Commissioner.
Mr. Marone withdraws your question.
Yeah.
Any comments from Mr. Marone from the board?
You can do a lot of things, but you can't do everything, so.
Yeah. She would like to have me run a McDonald's restaurant.
Well, you shouldn't have turned it down, Commissioner.
You should have shut it down, Mr. Brown.
Next on the agenda will be Mr. Michael Schuler, county attorney, report.
Commissioner, item number one is on your auditor selection RFQ. I'm requesting that the board consider allowing me to amend the, the RFQ to increase the number of pages that applicants can submit as a response. Uh, the current RFQ limits their response to three pages. Uh, the clerk's office, uh, and not only perhaps Mr. Marone, but at least the clerk's office has received some, uh, communication requesting to increase those number of pages. One of those, uh, potential applicants said that, that typically, they submit as many as 50 pages in their response. I had limited the response to three pages, bearing in mind that this review committee is, is different than your ordinary review committees. Your ordinary review committee typically is, you've got some staff people. In this case, where your auditor selection committee is going to be comprised of your five elected constitutional officers or their representatives, a county commissioner, and the hospital CEO. So, I was trying to sort of limit the amount of information that, that, that board had to review. But I believe that the clerk is in favor of increasing this, and I would join in her recommendation that you allow us to amend the RFQ to allow up to 50 pages in the response. Uh, I do not see that this change, if you approve it, is going to cause any delay in the auditor selection process. I've already got space saved in the newspaper this week. Assuming that you approve it, it will be published once, uh, in the paper this week. It will hit the website, and we will also directly submit the amendment to anyone who's left their contact information with the county.
Mr. Chairman, Madam Clerk, are you okay with that?
I think it's a good idea.
Okay, and that's your recommendation, Mr. Schuler?
Yes, ma'am, Commissioner.
Same move.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Masti. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Our motion carries.
Uh, item number two is to bring back up for board discussion and, and direction to me that the, uh, the issue or the matter of potentially regulating or banning medical marijuana. Uh, we had discussed this at the end of last year. Uh, I'll, I'll, I'll follow Mr. Pierce's, uh, lead. I was a little bit late in bringing this back to you. I think the instructions were to bring this back to you on the first of the year. It's June, so it's, it's after the first of the year. But, uh, the, the county staff in all seriousness has received a couple of inquiries about dispensaries. I know I had one gentleman in my office recently that was talking about dispensaries, uh, and potential growth facilities. So, I thought it would be behoove me to bring this back to the board to see if y'all are ready to make a decision or just have some discussion today as to whether to do nothing, to regulate this, uh, or to ban medical marijuana in Franklin County. Those, those are your options. If, if you choose to regulate, the legislature is limited to your authority. You can only limit or regulate, uh, a dispensary in the same manner as you would regulate a pharmacy.
Can we do something now and change our mind later?
The board absolutely can, yes.
Well, I know that. I, I would say we didn't need to do nothing. I don't think we need to do nothing, you know.
If we did do anything, we'd have to start with a pharmacy ordinance first, or some kind of.
That is correct. We do not, at present, have any special zoning regulations for pharmacies.
That's what I'm saying.
Hey, comment, it's a matter of time.
I just make a motion to table it till we have to face the fact.
Well, well, Commissioner, you certainly can do that, but if the board's desire seems to be to take no action at this time, I don't know that you would need to make a motion to table it, because it's not formally for you. It's not on the agenda. A commissioner hasn't made a motion to move forward in any respects.
We just let it lay there.
Yeah.
Okay. And then the final item on action items is item number three. This concerns the partial repayment of the overpaid public salary from, uh, Pinky Jackal. On Friday, she brought me a check for essentially $2,170. She is still contesting approximately $1,200 of the amount due and says that she's waiting on a final legal opinion from her attorney. Then I'll, I'll give you more details on that in my report. We can go over that as much as you would like to. The board action that I'm requesting is that unless you tell me otherwise, I'm going to set a deadline for her attorney to give me his legal opinion or her legal opinion by Friday of next week. And if, uh, they provide me with a sufficient legal opinion that while the money, the $1,200 is not owed, then it doesn't have to be repaid, otherwise it's time to resort to litigation. Bring that to the board's attention. If the board has any other comment or directions for me, I would request that you give it to me now.
Yeah, she paid you, right? She paid you some part of it.
Yes, sir. She, she's paid $2,170 on Friday. She is contesting approximately $1,200. That, that, that consists of $950 that she's contesting that she should get a credit for an underpayment during her first fiscal year in office. And then she took what I believe were some additional, uh, deductions that she should not have taken. The way I understand this from the auditor is that the FICA, the, the Medicare and the Florida retirement system should be repaid, uh, back to the supervisor's office. And the supervisor's office makes those adjustments for those, uh, tax items that, that they should not have been deducted ahead of time. So, between the taxes that were deducted and the, uh, the $950 underpayment, that totals about $1,208 that still remains in dispute.
Let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
Do we get, do we get any knowledge that she wasn't underpaid?
No, sir. According to our auditor, she was underpaid her salary during the first fiscal year.
She was?
A- according to our auditors, that is correct. I've, I've accepted their conclusions, but the fact that there was an underpayment, I've not found any legal basis. That was one of the things that I, issues that I examined before I sent the demand letter is, now that I was aware of that fact, was she or was she not entitled to a credit? Uh, I find no legal basis that she's entitled to the credit. I've informed her of that in writing and in person several times. I've invited her to send me any legal authority that they have with credit, and to date, I've not received anything other than the letter last Friday saying she's waiting on the final legal opinion of her counsel. There's a, a state law, Commissioner Lockley, that says, that establishes the, the salary of the supervisory election, and it can't exceed that in any fiscal year. There's another statute that says that the supervisor does have the ability legally to earn less than the maximum salary. But there's no statute, uh, no case law, no rule, no regulation, no attorney general opinion that I've been able to locate that says that you can take an underpayment from one fiscal year and credit it in any fashion against an overpayment in a second fiscal year. I just don't find any legal basis for that, and therefore, I can't accept that or recommend to you to accept that.
Well, what I'm going to do, I'm going to take your lead. Uh, I'm washing my hands, take your lead, you lawyer.
Yes, well, my recommendation begins, I will set a, because no deadline was stated in the letter. We don't need to have an open-ended deadline. This issue has been on the table since March, when I sent, on March 15th, maybe March 16th, when I sent my first demand letter, uh, to Mrs. Jackal. But this is not a new issue, it's an old issue, and it just, there just needs to be a resolution with finality. So, you know, my recommendation is I will set a deadline for next Friday for that legal opinion to be rendered. If, um, I'm incorrect in any fashion, and I don't think that I am, I'm, I'm, I don't mind changing my opinion if, if there's facts and law that would cause me to change my opinion. But at this point, I'm not aware of any reason why she should be entitled to the, a credit for the over, excuse me, the underpayment, and therefore, that money is due, as well as for the, the taxes that, that she has otherwise deducted should also be repaid. And then that credit will be given, but it's to be given, as I understand it, at the supervisor's office.
The burden of proof is on Ms. Jackal to prove that she is due a credit. You say right now, there is no legal basis for that credit. So, therefore, as a commissioner, I'm going to accept your recommendation to allow you to give a time certain for the legal stuff to come to you that you're asking about the attorney now, and, and I think you need to follow that same direction.
Thank you, Commissioner. With that being said, that's not.
I would really like something else, but since she's already paid the money, and I'm going to say it right out there, if I had done that, if the clerk had done that, if any of these other board members had done that, we've been right next door to Jared Patterson in the State's Attorney's office. I think we've been very lenient with Ms. Jackal. She was a public official, she was a public servant, and her duties as a public servant, she knew very well. So, that's where I'm going to leave it, and I just think you're in the right direction.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Any other comments for the attorney and the board members?
I want to ask a question. Are we still needing to turn to Schuler from our board to, have we already moved to put somebody on the review committee for the, we still need to do that?
You can do it at any time now, or the actual RFQs will not be open until your second meeting in July.
Okay.
But y'all can do it any time between now and that time period.
I, I'll just make sure I remember right timeframe, and I'm good. I just want to make sure.
You want to let us make a motion?
Let's do it.
Let's do it. I make a motion that, uh, Commissioner Jones.
Why did I know that was just? I should have just kept talking.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders. Second by Commissioner Masti. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Our motion carries. You're now, you're now being appointed.
Be careful, be careful opening your mouth.
No, I just want to take care of things, Commissioner. It's all good.
Hey, that's my privilege as senior commissioner, I can put you on there.
Trust me, I know how it feels.
We're down to commissioner comment?
Well, Mr. Chairman, did, there were some of these, uh, informational items. I usually don't read the board, but, uh, you had ordered me to go over some of these issues.
I usually don't read the board, but, uh, you had wanted me to go over some of these issues. Um, item number four, which is not an action item, it's just for your information. Uh, the city of Apalachicola has recently voted to, uh, request an increase in the fire MSBU from fifty dollars to ninety-five dollars. Uh, currently, your MSBU makes, uh, brings in approximately forty thousand nine hundred dollars for the Apalachicola Fire District. So you're essentially talking about doubling that amount. Uh, I have been in communication with the city manager, Ms. Lee Mathis. She is in the process of preparing a letter, and she'll be sending it to you requesting authorization for you to put this issue on the ballot. The city of Apalachicola cannot put this on the ballot, it has to come through you as a direction to the supervisor of elections. I did speak, uh, with the supervisor earlier this week, and, um, she's told the city of Apalachicola that they can put this question on the ballot in November, the general election, at no cost because we're already printing up the ballot. Or if they want to do a special mail out ballot, that the cost will be approximately sixty-five hundred dollars. Uh, I have been given the assurance, uh, from Ms. Mathis that the city is not looking to reduce their funding from ad valorem taxes and replace it with county MSBU dollars. The difference being, of course, your MSBU dollars are paid by the county residents, and the ad valorem funding for the fire department comes from the city of Apalachicola and the ad valorem taxes. But she's assured me they're not reducing, in fact, that they plan on making a proportional increase in their ad valorem support for the fire department. Um, on a related note, with the city of Apalachicola, although this is unofficial, um, I don't have any word from a city official, but I am hearing some fairly strong discussions that the city is still considering annexation, and particularly the annexation of that Highway ninety-eight corridor going from Two Mile out for the water treatment plant. Uh, again, that's unofficial. I do not have anything from city staff. I've gone to their website. I've, I've been told that they plan on scheduling some special meeting to discuss annexation issues in general and that annexation in particular. But just wanted you to know that, that it appears that issue is not dead. Um, on Waste Pro, y'all have directed me to send a letter to, um, Waste Pro. To that end, I actually sent an email, not, not a letter, but I have had several conversations with Ralph Mills about the issue of them taking, uh, county, Franklin County garbage out of the county and bypassing our, uh, scale house. He advises me that beginning in April and May, that they really started re-diverting and going back to our scale house for the most part. Uh, the, the one issue that he and Mr. Fonda Davis are working on right now is, uh, the hours of operation on the weekend at the scale house so that would allow them to bring in the St. George Island garbage. That's, that's about another hundred and twenty-five tons of garbage each month. And if we can, you know, work out a, a schedule where the scale house is open in the afternoon, and they, they'll be glad to run that through the, the scale house as well. But Ralph told me that he understands the issue, and he's going to do everything he can to work with the board. But other than that, I don't really have any, unless the board thinks so, otherwise I, I will not be discussing any of the other informational items on my report.
Will it pay for that person who gotta stay up there? Would it be, I mean, would it be worth that?
Um, I would defer to Mr. Davis on how he schedules, but I would suspect that he can just juggle people's schedules around so that you're not actually having any cost increase. They, they'll just come in a little later and stay a little later instead of coming in earlier and leaving at noon. I mean, there, there are certainly ways to juggle the schedule, but, uh, I don't want to, you know, get involved in, in, in the weeds of how your department head runs that department.
That won't be no overtime by being on the weekend?
They have to work forty hours a week, but, because already, they're already working on the weekend. I mean, they, they work from eight, eight to twelve during the summer hours. I, I know, I'm not sure if it's open during the, the winter time or not, I really don't know.
All right.
We're down to Commissioner comment? I got one comment on the issue with, uh, Alan talking about the oyster project coming from Triant and every one of them being, uh, aquaculture related. Uh, there's a big push from the state level and obviously now from Triant level to, uh, support the aquaculture more than the wild-caught oyster. And I just want to bring that to the board's attention so that you're all aware of that. Aquaculture is becoming more like, uh, the land speculation of two thousand and four, two thousand and five. A lot of people wanting to get leases, they have to have them for three years, and then come around and sell them. Uh, your, the ten thousand dollar grant program that Alan mentioned that, that DAX is applied for through, uh, the Triant Fund, actually provides ten thousand dollars matching monies. In other words, whoever applies for that ten thousand dollar grant also has to contribute ten thousand dollars. I don't see that helping our local oysters. I don't see, I don't see that helping supplement their income into the public bars' actual return, and we hope they return. And, uh, I think we all hope that they return and allow these people to go back to work and make a decent, uh, living for their families. But it's all about aquaculture. And, and as it moves forward, you're gonna get more and more pressure for this board to allow aquaculture in the middle of Apalachicola Bay, which will interfere with your crabbing and your shrimping and your flounder and then your guide fishermen and a whole lot of other uses, as we've currently stated many times, of what the bay, who utilizes the bay and how they utilize the bay. So I just want to bring that to the board's attention so that you see what's coming down the road.
I do.
And not be caught off guard because we're being pushed, pushed, pushed harder and harder and harder. I'm not against aquaculture, but it has to be done in such a way that it doesn't interfere with other industries and other users of our, our bay as we know it. So I just want to throw that out there, that was my comment. Any other Commissioner comment for today?
I have, I, I've got a couple, you just added that one.
Please, sir.
For me, um, um, I agree with you, Commissioner Parish.
Thank you.
Uh, this board has always supported wild-caught oysters. We have went all over this country, representing this bay and trying to, um, show the importance of this bay. And you're right, uh, they're gonna, they're gonna fund, Department of Ag will give them a ten thousand dollar grant, but it's matching money. There's none of our local folks, the majority of our local folks cannot afford ten thousand dollars out of pocket. And I think sometimes it'll be more than that. And then you look at the aquaculture leases that we already have. I was a big supporter of the aquaculture leases where they're at, in Alligator Harbor. I'm, I'm big with that. But wild-caught bars need to be wild-caught bars, and that's the, the, the way I feel about it. But if you look at the aquaculture project down in Alligator Harbor, you've got a lot of those, those leases, at least thirteen of them, that is not doing anything. It's not doing oysters, it's not doing clams. So what is that? Why haven't we got, and two, we're supposed to have first preference. Our folks are supposed to have first preference on that. Franklin County folks first, wild-caught folks second. So, you know, it's, and that's where we were coming from. Before you open any more leases, make sure that they are doing the product, productivity that they're supposed to be doing before you open anything else, you know? And, and I'm very concerned about it because I, I, I mean, like all of us, we ride across that bridge. This morning, I rode across there, you could ha, almost count on two hands how many boats were out there.
Twenty-one of them, and I stopped and counted them.
Yeah, I mean, that's how many. And used to, you used to have three or four hundred out there, you know? The state has done a poor job of taking care of some of their resources. And we, this board, has fought, fought, evolved. And no matter how hard we fight, it's not gonna get no better until the mindset changes. So, I mean, I'm like Commissioner Parish said, there is a place in it for aquaculture, but there's also a place in it for wild-caught bars and taking care of our folks. And we're looking at, we're, we're the ones that's looking at our folks. And we have to meet them in church, grocery store, wherever, doctor's office or wherever. The other thing is, and that, that's all I'll say there. The other thing is, uh, next week, we will be attending our annual conference down in Orlando, and we'll be taking our, our county coordinator. I'm proud to have you as our county coordinator, Michael Moreau. You hear me? I think you're doing an excellent job. I'm doing it for that reason, and you know, everybody knows what reason. But I will be coming off of the Florida Association of Counties Board of Directors at that time, um, because I am not seeking reelection, and I have served on that since two thousand and two. Very proud of it. And, uh, also, I will be coming off the Small County Coalition, and I've been serving since two thousand and two on it. So, I'm very proud of that. And I have met a lot of good folks in this state of Florida. And I'm gonna tell you something. You know where the majority of the good folks are? Right here, right here in Franklin County, and half of them is our staff, you know? And I want to tell y'all, I support our staff one hundred percent. I support our department heads one hundred percent. And if you have to have a budget done, I know y'all can do a budget. I know y'all can do anything that needs to be done because we have hired the best people in the world here. And I'm gonna tell you something, I take very, I take very, to my heart, somebody saying that you all cannot prepare a budget, you all do not know what you're doing and all that. I'm just telling y'all, you know what you're doing, you're fine. And after November, David Adler's thing can get ready for me to write some articles to the newspaper because I'm gonna counteract all these negative articles that's out here. You know, sometimes you have good ideas, but you just don't know how to get them back and pass. But being sarcastic or nasty is not sure gonna have the problem. So I just want it to be said, and I think everybody knows why I'm saying it. And, um, more between now and November's gonna be said. Uh, the things, we just need to, we just need to say some things. And I just want to let you know that I support this board. Uh, and no matter whether I'm here or there, or at Montana or North Carolina, I'm gonna support this board. And when you see me out in that audi, audience, I'm not gonna be here to hound you. I'm gonna be here to help you and support you, even though I can't get up to talk to you. I can still do that, though. But I just want to let y'all know that, um, y'all are near and dear my heart, and I'm starting my progression out. And it's gonna be, you know, I'm, I'm ready, I'm ready. So, anything that we can do to take care of business between now and November, I'm ready to do it, and let's do it.
You know, on this, uh, on this agriculture deal, it, it, the bottom line is, it's election year. Them folks up in Tallahassee, that man running for governor, Putnam, he never been down here, but, he, he, he's an agriculture specialist. He's an agriculture man. But he doing it, he trying to be slick and putting the, turning it around like we the bad guy. We trying to help our people. He trying to get rid of our people, y'all. That's the bottom line. And it ain't right, I mean, that agriculture is, it's gonna be for a select few. Get wild-caught, it'll be out there for a whole lot of people who choose to do it. But you gonna have a whole lot of people out of work if you just deal with agriculture. Those, it just won't be them.
They don't care.
That's why they don't, that's why they not gonna put the resource for the, for, for the wild-caught. I mean, they, that, that base shouldn't, that base should have been back to work now with the monies and everything, and then they did, they just doing it wrong. They know they're doing it wrong, and then they pushing pillars of hope, pushing on this department, pushing it on that department, and the base did it now.
Mm-hmm. I know, Mr. Noah.
They, they, they just, they trying to put, they, they trying to put Franklin County out of business.
Any other Commissioner comment? Meeting adjourned.